We'll call to order this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board at 7:07 PM on Monday, April 7th, in the administration building boardroom, lower level. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Vee.
Excuse?
Mr. Jeros.
Excuse?
Mr. Croner.
Here.
Mrs. Mielefeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randall.
Here.
Mrs. Rios.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here. We will begin with the mock trial presentation. After qualifying for the state level of the Wisconsin State Bars Mock Trial Competition at the Waukesha Regionals, the Wauwatosa West Mock Trial Team competed at the state competition in Madison on March 9th. The team scored 13th in the state out of more than 100 teams that competed throughout the season. In one round, they lost to the state winner by just six points. One of our attorneys, Senior John Schmutzer, was named one of the top five attorneys in the state. Members who competed in the state competition are Nina Best, Sharia Brown, David Bruck, Maddie Carroll, Sam Frederick, Charlie Kopp, Justine Langlis, Marina Liston, Mark Salamone, and John Schmutzer. Students are here to argue their case. You have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Mark Salamone. I'm a junior at Wauwatosa West High School, and I've been an attorney on the Wauwatosa West Mock Trial Team for the past three years. The Wisconsin State Bar Association sponsors the mock trial tournament in which over 120 schools from across the state compete. In this year's case, a girl named Taylor Hamilton struck and injured a girl named Alex Cooper while driving her car. Alex Cooper is now suing Taylor Hamilton alleging that Ms. Hamilton was negligent on the night in question. To prepare for this case, we have developed our witness and attorney roles over the past six months. At the competition, there are four trials, which allows each team to present each side of the case twice. For the past two years, we have been runner-up at the Waukesha region, but this year, we received a wild card and were able to compete at state in Madison. Thank you.
I will be presenting what an opening statement would be like for the plaintiff. Your Honor, ladies and gentlemen, time. It slips by, most of the time unnoticed, but it is perhaps the most potent force in our world. It underlies every aspect of this case. Many things happened on the day in question, October 5th, 2012. In the hours before Taylor Hamilton struck our client, Alex Cooper, Taylor was arguing with her boyfriend, Avery. In the minutes before Taylor struck Alex, Taylor was listening to music and picking up friends. And in the seconds before Taylor struck Alex, Taylor was texting Avery. In those crucial seconds, Taylor was distracted. Seconds matter. They mattered to Alex Cooper, whose lost leg means that the rest of her days are irrevocably changed. Today, we, the plaintiff in this action, have the burden of proof. It is our responsibility to prove that Taylor Hamilton was negligent, as defined in Wisconsin Jury Instruction 1005, and we will. It is our job to -- we will prove that from distractions, Taylor Hamilton failed to exercise ordinary care in order to prevent injury to others. At this point, this is when we would introduce each one of our witnesses. Now, at the time of the accident, Taylor Hamilton was breaking three laws. While holding a probationary license, Taylor Hamilton was using an electronic telephone and violating her restrictions as a new driver. She was also composing an electronic text message while driving. Now, in the hours, minutes, and seconds before Taylor Hamilton struck Alex Cooper, Taylor failed to fulfill her duty as a driver. Now, your honor, ladies and gentlemen, as you listen to the case presented to you today, think to yourself, who is more responsible? Who is more responsible for the injuries caused to Alex Cooper that will forever change her life? And who is more responsible for the minutes of distraction and seconds of negligence that have caused a lifetime of loss? Now, at this time, each -- this is when each witness would have the opportunity to present their side of the case. Their attorney would directly -- would direct them, and then opposing attorney would cross-examine the witness.
Hello, my name is Madeline Carroll. I'm a junior at Tosa West and have been on the mock trial team for three years. I played Alex Cooper. I'm the star basketball player at the Clearwater Regional High School basketball team, or at least I was before Taylor Hamilton hit me with her car and I lost my leg, along with my scholarships and my future. People have been trying to blame this accident on me, saying that I was wearing dark clothes or failed to look both ways. But that's not true. I know I looked both ways. I always do. I just want justice for what happened to me that night.
Now, Ms. Cooper, you were wearing dark clothes that night, specifically a maroon and black jacket, is that right?
Well, the same thing had everyone at that basketball game. It was our school colors.
However, you said in your affidavit that you blended into the night and snuck away unnoticed, is that right?
Well, no one noticed me leave the game.
But that's not what you said in your affidavit, is that?
Well, I did say that, yes.
Now, Ms. Cooper, you don't distinctly remember looking both ways that night, do you?
Well, I always look both ways.
Right, but you cannot distinctly remember looking both ways.
Well, I usually -- I usually do, but not distinctly.
So, if you say you looked both ways, how do you describe the car that -- how do you describe that you didn't see the car that struck you?
It was going too fast. My attorney just asked me about my clothes and whether or not I looked both ways to help determine if the way I acted caused contributory negligence.
I'm Marina Liston. I'm a senior at Wauwatosa West, and I've been a part of the mock trial team for the past two years. This year, I played the role of Blake Green. I'm a sophomore who attends Clearwater Regional High School until I was expelled for getting into some trouble helping out with the senior prank. And I was really good friends with Taylor Hamilton, and I was in the passenger seat of the car that night when she was texting and she hit Alex Cooper. It was a very traumatic event.
Ms. Green, you've just told us that Ms. Hamilton was texting that night, correct?
She was.
In the deposition that you gave in January, you said that Ms. Hamilton was not texting, correct?
I had, but I was just looking out for a friend. I didn't really know any better. I hadn't talked to attorneys before, and it was a very traumatic event.
And after this occurred, you were caught vandalizing school property, weren't you?
I was just helping out with the senior prank.
And Taylor ratted you out?
Yeah, she was caught by the cops that night, and she was the only one who talked to them, so I mean, she had to have said my name.
So, after Taylor narked on you and told the police exactly what you did that night, you changed your story, correct?
I didn't change my story. I'm just giving a more accurate depiction of what happened that night.
No further questions.
All right. My name is David Brook. I am a senior at Wauwatosa West High School, and I've just been involved with mock trial this past year. And my role in this case was the plaintiff expert, Ryan Crowley, who was hired by plaintiff's counsel to investigate the accident. So, I posit that, given that standard headlights illuminate 160 feet in front of the vehicle, and given a 1.1 second reaction time being the time it takes to register an obstacle in the road and react to it and apply the brakes, takes 1.1 seconds. And then, also adding on the amount of distance it would take to stop the car, it would only take 135 feet to bring the vehicle to a halt. Therefore, Ms. Hamilton must have been doing something that would have caused her to lengthen this time.
Now, Mr. Crowley, you were contacted by plaintiff's counsel on the date of November 5th to investigate, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you later visited the scene of the accident on the date of November 16th?
Yes.
So, Mr. Crowley, you visited the scene of the accident more than a month after it actually occurred?
That is correct.
And, Mr. Crowley, this section of Nash Street does not have any streetlights, does it?
No, it does not.
And in darker conditions, is it in fact more difficult to perceive an obstruction?
Yes, it is.
No further questions.
So, the significance of that is being more than a month afterwards, the lighting conditions would be different, and this plays into the role of camouflage, which would result in what's called contributory negligence, which is the duty of the pedestrian?
Hi, my name is Justine Langlis. I take on the role of Taylor Hamilton in this case. I'm a senior at Tosa West, and I have been in mock trial only for this year. I just wanted to say that the accident that night wasn't my fault. Alex ran in front of my car, and I did everything that I could to prevent that from happening. I didn't mean to hurt her, and I am truly sorry.
Ms. Hamilton, you were negligent in your driving on the night in question, weren't you?
Objection, this goes towards the ultimate question in the case.
Ms. Hamilton, earlier in the night in question, you had had a fight with your boyfriend, correct?
Yeah, we were supposed to go to the football game together, or to a movie and dinner together, but he decided to ditch me to go to the football game.
So, you were mad while you were driving, weren't you?
It made me mad for a minute, but I'm a teenager, I got over it.
While you were driving, you were receiving text messages, correct?
Yeah, I had Blake in the car, so I asked her if she could read them for me, and she did, she agreed.
And you responded to these text messages through Blake until less than a second before you saw the person in the road, correct?
Well, I was telling Blake to say -- what to write back for me, yes. This line of questioning was intended to show that I was distracted while I was driving the night that I hit Alex Cooper.
My name is Sam Frederick, and I'm a junior at Wauwatosa West. This is my second year on the mock trial team, and I play the role of Jerry Hausman. I've got a bit of a green thumb. My garden's the pride of Clearwater, but unfortunately, some of the local kids don't see it that way. They're always trampling my plants and parking on my lawn. I even have to sit out in my garage to keep an eye on my garden. That's how I ended up seeing the accident. I was sitting in my garage, keeping an eye on things, when all of a sudden, a Lincoln Town Car hit Alex Cooper. Before the accident, I saw Alex Cooper in a dark hoodie across the street, looking down at something, probably one of those new-fangled electronic devices, or whatever kids have these days. Then she dashed out in front of a car and got hit.
And, Mr. Hausman, you weren't wearing your glasses that night, were you?
No, I don't need them to see.
But you wore prescribed glasses, correct?
Yeah, I don't know why the doctor thought I needed them. I can see fine without them.
So, you believe that you're better than your doctor?
Well, I can -- I'm not wearing them today, and I can see you just fine.
And, Mr. Hausman, you were also drinking a few beverages that night as well, correct?
Objection, this is irrelevant.
This goes towards the credibility of this witness.
Could you repeat the question?
Mr. Hausman, you were also drinking a few beverages that night as well, correct?
Yeah, I was thirsty.
However, you're doing this in your garage, is that right?
Yeah, it's a real shame that I have to sit out there and watch over my property like that.
However, in your affidavit, you state that you do this in your garage, that you do not take your show on the road, is that correct?
Well, I haven't had much of a show to take on the road in 20 years.
No further questions.
My name is Charles Kep. I'm a junior at Wauwatosa West. I've been involved in the mock trial program at Tosa West since my freshman year, and I will be playing the role of Kirby Latnato. I'm the expert for the respondent in today's case specializing in accident reconstruction. I've been a member of numerous organizations and written many publications related to this subject. By using sighted figures related to optimal reaction time and confirming the speed of the respondent using both skid marks and data from technology in the respondent's car, I can prove that the respondent was not negligible, as she simply did not have enough time to stop her car.
Now, Mr. Latnato, many factors can affect a driver's ability to perceive, is that correct?
That is correct.
And many factors can play a role in distracting a driver from their duty, is that right?
Yes, that's correct as well.
For example, loud noises or music could distract a driver, yes?
It wouldn't distract a driver from seeing the road as sound and sight are different sensory mechanisms, but it could potentially distract someone from hearing a sound, yes?
Texting while driving could also distract a driver, could it not?
If there was texting, though I don't believe that's pertinent to today's case.
If a driver was upset and emotionally unstable, would that affect their ability to focus on the road?
Only if they were very, very incredibly upset or incredibly distracted by some emotion. Minor annoyances really don't distract someone much at all.
And now, as indicated by the sensing module of Taylor Hamilton's vehicle, her speed in the moments leading up to the collision was 37 miles per hour, is that correct?
At one specific moment, yes.
And the posted speed limit on Nash Street is 35 miles per hour, is that right?
Yes, though, being a man of practicality, I recognize that the difference between 35 and 37 miles per hour in this case doesn't really matter, seeing as either way, she would have had enough distance, or, excuse me, she wouldn't have had enough distance to stop, even if she had been doing everything she could.
But she was in fact going 37 miles per hour in some moments, yes?
Yes.
So, Mr. Latnato, Ms. Hamilton was exceeding the speed limit on the night of October 5th, yes or no?
Once again, practically speaking, it didn't matter, but yes.
She was?
Yes.
No further questions.
My name is John Schmutzer. I am a senior at Wauwatosa West. I have been involved with the program for three years since my sophomore year. At this point, after all of the witnesses would have been heard in testimony, attorneys for the plaintiff and the respondent in the case would proceed to give closing statements to summarize the case, as well as our belief of what the verdict should be. At this time, I will be delivering a closing statement for what would be the plaintiff in today's case. When I do count the clock that tells the time, the clock ticks on relentless, for time does not stop. William Shakespeare used iambic pentameter 400 years ago to express this simple message that time goes on and it does not stop. When I do count the clock that tells the time, each I am one second. And though one second may seem infinitesimal in the large scheme of time, seconds are in fact the most crucial, as you have seen today. For in the seconds leading up to the collision on the night of October 5th, Taylor Hamilton failed to take the precautions necessary to ensure her own safety and the safety of pedestrians on the road. Through today's testimony, you have heard from numerous witnesses of the many distractions plaguing Taylor Hamilton on that night, and of her complete disregard for her duty as a driver. At this point in my statement, I would proceed to go down chronologically and explain each of the key points of testimony offered by each witness, focusing on the elements that most benefit our case. May it please the court, today, you have heard the case of Taylor Hamilton and Alex Cooper. And in a few moments, you will be asked to fill out a special verdict form, in which you must determine who carries the greater weight of negligence in this matter. Negligence, being defined in Wisconsin Jury Instruction Number 1005, as failing to exercise ordinary care. Ordinary care is further defined as the precautions that a reasonable person in similar circumstances would take. Through today's testimony, it has been shown that through the violation of numerous Wisconsin state safety statutes and laws, Ms. Taylor Hamilton was negligent on the night of October 5th by texting while driving, driving with a probationary license, and having additional persons in the vehicle to distract her. She was exceeding the speed limit in the moments leading up to the collision, and it is her actions alone that caused this accident. And though you may believe that Alex Cooper carried some portion of negligence in this case, for after all, it is the driver and pedestrian that hold a responsibility to themselves and to others in traffic scenarios. However, a vehicle has killing power, a pedestrian does not. And Ms. Cooper is lucky to be alive today. Thank you for your consideration. And now, this concludes ours time with you today. Ms. Marina Liston just has a few more words to say, but thank you for your time, everybody.
We would just like to thank you guys for listening us today, and we would like to thank Dr. Erdel and Mr. Clarko in the school for supporting us throughout the year and hopefully supporting us in the continuing years to come, as we go on to hopefully another state tournament.
Well, thank you very, very much. You have some plaques there, could you please hold them up so that we can see them?
These two are our runner-up plaques from individual defendants, and this is our state flag.
Wow, and they will be on display, we hope, at the school. Yes, all right. Well, thank you very much. Is there any board?
Do you have a question?
Yes, Mrs. Rios.
I'm curious, how do you come up with the script? So, was each person writing it? What's the backstory behind this great performance?
Well, we all have depositions and affidavits that we kind of improv off of, I suppose, but most of it is guidelines in a partially-written script, and it changes a lot throughout. Like, my lawyer and I, Mark Salamone, we rewrote a lot of our questions the night before state, or the weekend before state, or something around that. But they're mostly just thought out ahead of time thoroughly. There's things that we know we can't say, and things that we know we should say and we have to say, but other than that, it's kind of a by ear.
We get the bare bones of the case with the case materials, but we have to develop a character and flavor for each individual witness.
Okay.
And for reference, at the beginning of the season, we gave a packet about that, a full malt stuff, and it'll have different statements given by witnesses and different documents surrounding the case, and each will have their own strengths and weaknesses, and it's up to each team to go after the weaknesses and then consequently defend each one.
That's great. That's wonderful. Good job.
Thank you.
Any quick question?
Mrs. Randall?
Is this a state club after school, or are you part of the same classes?
It's an extracurricular.
It's an extracurricular, okay. Congratulations. I know I've seen at least one of you more recently at the...
I got a little confused with that.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, great job, and thank you to your advisors, who I'm sure put in a lot of time. Woo-hoo!
Yes, well...
Thanks.
Anyone else? Well, congratulations again, and thank you for honoring us with your presence tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the oath of office for board members. The April 1 election results for the Wauwatosa School Board are seat number four, Mary Jo Randall, seat number five, Kristy Casey, seat number six, Sharon Newfeld, and seat number seven, Brian Bowden. School Board -- I am School Board President Mike Meyer. Will administer the oath of office for the four members elected for a three-year school board term that begins Monday, April 28th, 2014. School Board officers are elected at the first regularly scheduled meeting in May, which this year is May 5. So, please, will the four of you step to the front?
The ones that we speak to. You need a microphone, Mike.
Joe?
Over here.
Cheryl? Kristy? Brian? All right, yes, that's right, so...
You need a microphone, Mike.
Before I do the mic?
Microphone.
Microphone?
They'll need a microphone, too.
Oh. All right, so how about if... All right, so, repeat after me each phrase. I will pause, and after the initial "I," each of you, all at one time, state your full name. So, are we ready? "I," state your names.
Mary Jo Randall.
Who have been elected...
Who have been elected.
...to the Board of Education of the Wauwatosa... School District.
To the Board of Education of the Wauwatosa School District.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof...
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin...
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office...
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You each sign your document, and then I will sign that... Can they do this after the meeting, or...
Take this.
They should do it right now, all right. Congratulations again, and thank you very much for the next three years. We will now move to public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we will approve -- we will move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So do.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. We will now move to recognitions. Mrs. Rios?
Yes. All right. Wauwatosa West High School junior Sophia Bauer was named a grand winner in the Wisconsin PTA Reflections Contest, qualifying her to advance to the national competition. Several West students also were named state winners. Seniors Cheanne Green and Tiffany Pazenci, juniors Rachel Campice, Nina Best, and Faith Vile Kale, and sophomores Brenna Blaney and Morgan Zigmund. Wauwatosa's grand and state winners, along with other winners from across the state, will be recognized at the Wisconsin PTA's annual convention in April... will be recognized at the Wisconsin PTA's annual convention in April in Green Bay. Reflections is a themed art contest in which students may enter any of six categories: literature, music composition, photography, visual arts, dance choreography, and film video production. Awards of Excellence and Awards of Merit are recognized at the annual National PTA Convention, and displayed in a virtual gallery on the National PTA's website.
Wauwatosia West High School sophomore Michael Stanky won a total of three awards for his photography in the Regional and National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Competitions. The awards recognize student achievement in the visual arts and creative writing. Stanky won Gold Keys at both the Regional and National Competitions for his alternative process photograph. Furthermore, Stanky won a Best in Grade Award at the national level. Only two 10th grade artists in the country won the Best in Grade Award. Gold Key Awards are given to students whose work demonstrates the highest levels of originality, technique, and personal vision.
Four Wauwatosia Whitman Middle School eighth graders won awards at the Wisconsin MLFA Forensics Tournament held in South Milwaukee on March 22nd. Two students won first place trophies for their efforts. Georgiana Muro for Infomercial, and Caroline Racho for Impromptu Speaking. Ian Osip won second place for Persuasive Speech. Winning third place was Megan Veat for Solo Humorous. With seventy-one schools competing, the Tosa East Forensics Team took second place, Division Two, at the WFCA State Tournament in Ripon on March 29th. Six students advanced beyond preliminary rounds. Four of these, four of those students, sophomore Sophie Dion Kirchner, junior Grace Tiafalo, and seniors Sienna Muofeld and Luke Murphy, went on to semifinals. Two students, senior Hannah Dion Kirchner and junior Tuxford Turner, advanced to the final round for their categories, both earning fifth place in the state.
Thank you very much for those recognitions. Uh, action items, we will move to student learning. Um, Mr. Kroner, please, will you read the motion?
Thank you. Uh, number one, high school math courses for 2014-2015. It is recommended that the School Board approve the Calculus and Analytic Geometry III for four credits to be offered first semester, and Linear Mathematics for four credits offered in second semester for the 2014-2015 school year, as presented and discussed at the March 24th meeting. Number two, high school science courses for 2015 through 2017. It is recommended that the School Board approve four new one-semester electives for the Science Department. Anatomy and Physiology for 2015 and 16, Astronomy 2015-16, Environmental Science 2015-16, and Applied Chemistry and Physics 2016 and 17, as presented and discussed at the March 24th meeting. An ISO move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Um, Mrs., Mrs. Randal, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any board discussion? Is there any, oh, yes, Mrs. Muofeld.
Just that, I'm just very excited about these, these programs. Um, you know, we've been needing math and science courses as our students are accelerating, and I'm very pleased that we can offer this for them next year.
Thank you, is there any other board discussion? Is there any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muofeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randal?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries five-zero.
Uh, Superintendent's Report, uh, the Lois Weber Theater dedication.
Thank you. District Administration and School Board dedicated the theater at Longfellow in memory of Lois Weber on March 27th. Mayor Kathy Eli proclaimed the 27th of March to be Lois Weber Day in the city of Wauwatosia. The following wording is on the plaque that now hangs on the wall of the Lois Weber Theater. Wauwatosia School Board, 1976-2013. Children's Theater of Wauwatosia, 1966-2013. This theater is dedicated in memory of Lois Weber by the Wauwatosia School Board and the administration. Lois Weber was a committed public servant in the Wauwatosia community. Her dedication to education and fine arts for the young people of Wauwatosia will be her legacy. Dedicated, March 2014. And also, on Wednesday night of this week, there will be a, um, mock school board held in this room. The Wauwatosia Youth Commission holds its annual mock school board, and if you want to see a display of student performance, like we saw from the mock trial team, there's a good opportunity to come that evening and watch our, our students from east and west perform mock school board. There's nineteen juniors that will play the role, role of board members and administrators, and that starts at 7:00 PM at the Fisher Building.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Is there any board comment on the superintendent's report? Is there any community comment on the superintendent's report? Is there any community comment on non-agenda items? I will then make one, oh, yes, please come to the microphone.
Yes.
And please state your name and your address.
Susan Schwartz, 2107 North 122nd Street. I am just curious to find out what the reasoning is for coaches and/or other persons driving up to the Upper Ball Diamond with their vehicle and parking it by the grandstands.
And parking it by the grins?
Yes.
Okay.
By the, where the bathrooms and stuff are.
Uh, if Dr. Erdl has a response to that now, that would be okay, um, otherwise, um, we may need more information, so I would ask you to, um, call Dr. Erdl, is that acceptable? He probably has some questions to ask that are similar to your question, so when he gets the answers, he'll be ready to take your phone call.
Yeah, because this would, just to kind of give you a little update, this type of issue was happening last year already, before the Diamonds were set to be remade, and I know it's on the books that the only vehicles that are supposed to be on the field, area, are maintenance vehicles. Coaches are parking up there, and leaving their vehicles there during their whole practice time, or during the whole game.
All right, we appreciate your comment.
Okay, and the other issue that I'd like to bring forth is, with all the remodeling that was done out there, and with the hay that is out there, there is no grass seed left there. There is no grass there at all. What are your recommendations to fix the no-grass situation outside of the Ball Diamond areas?
Is that something you're prepared at this time to comment on?
No, I'm, I'll be happy to have somebody respond to you.
The other issue, there's also another issue on the east side of the diamond that's closest to North Avenue. There is a water runoff issue over there. Whoever did the landscaping in that particular section on the east side of that diamond, there is an area where water has gone down that's a foot wide and at least six inches deep, run, that runs along the side of the baseball diamond, across the sidewalk that's there, and then down the hill. And that may end up being a water issue for the people on 119th Street.
Yeah, I haven't heard, I mean, to be honest, the only comments I've heard were raving positive comments about the fields, other than the, um, I know the amount of time the buildings and grounds crews are spending up, spending picking up, uh, dog poop that's on the, on the fields, but other than that, the comments certainly, I will, um, definitely look into and have somebody get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we do appreciate your comment, uh, if, after the meeting, which we'll adjourn shortly, if you could leave your phone number with Dr. Erdl?
Okay.
And I, we don't want you to...
Okay.
...put it out over the microphone.
Right, right, thank you.
So, okay, thank you very much. Is there any other community comment on non-agenda items? Well then, I will, um, provide one non-agenda item or comment. I would, this is, um, Mrs. Rios' last regular board meeting. I wish to thank her for her distinguished service on the board, and wish her all the best in her, um, activities, so, and good luck to you and your fine family, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll be back, though. Just, just not the right time, no.
Not the right time, well, we hope to see you back.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Um, all right.
I'll just follow up to say goodbye to Carmella, and I hope it wasn't my mentoring.
No, you were a wonderful mentor.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your time and your help.
I just have one.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I just, I would like to just take this opportunity to recognize Carmella, because this job comes with a lot of, um, extra time, and if you didn't have the support by, you know, your family and the community members, obviously, and, and your fellow, um, you know, people on the board, but thank you very much, and, um, I really appreciate it. Thank you, Sharon.
And we, we also wish to thank Tom Girouse, who is, uh, also ending his term, and he cannot attend tonight, so, Tom, thank you very much for your distinguished service. And with that, uh, Mrs. Rios, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, if you wish.
This is the first time. Motion forward.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kroner, thank you, I can, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muofeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randal?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, we are adjourned.
So moved, would have been the right thing to say, all right.
We did fine.